Yep, to the cloud.
There it goes. All right, we are on the record.
Good.
Well, welcome everyone to the school budget. Q and A meeting tonight. This is our second of five scheduled school budget workshops before we get to the final meeting where we vote on the budget. Thank you, everyone for sending along your questions to the administrators and. Met this morning and I think the process tonight is we are going to let if there's anyone who has any comments from the public up to 10 minutes just at the beginning. And if we get through the answers, we'll have time at this for the school board members at the end. Sort of how we thought this might go. So we could let the administrators give their presentations on the questions. So jot some questions down if you have follow ups on those, but we think that would make be the best way forward. And then we'll have a hard stop at eight thirty, so when we go that long. And then next week, we'll continue with this and we're going to, at this point, the plan is to go. Any more follow up questions that may have come up that the administrators didn't have answers to? That you may have during our time, they'll they'll come back with that and also. Marcy is going to plan to go in a little more depth, maybe three thirty nine and also. The fun balance and some options we have so that we're going to get a little bit more of that kind of in depth next week. Before we get into citizen comments, I just want to read our goals to remind ourselves like we do every time. The first is maintaining and improving high quality of education for every student. Careful examination of line items and consideration of the success and effectiveness of the expenditures in order to provide a fiscally responsible budget. Support the strategic plan goals and clear and continual communication throughout the budget process. And to that end, I would just note that we continue to, as we have in the past and Elizabeth and others before me started meeting with. The town. Chair of the town council and the budget chair and the town manager this morning and we continue those on a monthly basis to ensure clear communication on that end. Along with Heather and myself. So at this point, if there's anyone. In the meeting from the public would like to speak. We're going to give two minutes and we'll have a 10 minute timeframe overall. If you'd like to speak, just raise your hand and we'll let you in. Not seeing any. Give it another minute just to make sure attendee. Okay. Don't think we're going to have anyone. So moving right along, we're going to go to Jason Mandarides. From Ponco with the questions that we sent along.
Great, thank you, Phil. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So thank you for the questions. For these follow up questions and hopefully I will do a thorough job of answering for them and. My document, I'm sure you all have this document in front of you. And it's titled everything, all the answers are on this document titled Poncove School, School Board Budget Questions and Answers and. So we've got. Five pages, so I'm not going to like go over everything verbatim, but try to hit the points and then please feel free to ask follow up questions. So first question. With regards to the proposed math interventionist position is is the proposed position permanent and the answer is yes. That I propose this to be a permanent position, not just a one year. And the next question, how will it fit into Poncove's RTI model? I'd like to thank Debbie Butterworth, our our current math interventionist for helping put this information together. Is I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read it, but I'm going to kind of skim through the beginning. Debbie paints a picture of a history that comes before my time of. Starting up a math intervention program at Poncove through a CEF grant. And this is something that she has been very passionate about for years. So starting that up and then just going on to current day. We have one math interventionist position and to compare it to our literacy supports, we have three literacy. Intervention specialist positions. So we have the one. So. This is something that my staff and I've been talking about with them for the for the past three and a half years about. Building more capacity in our RTI system in the area of math. So. If you go, if you go to the table, if you kind of like turn to the second page of this document. And it says fall 2020 student NWA math scores, which is it's a title that's underlined. Then below that, there's a table. And it shows in here, we've outlined some numbers. So if you look at the table. Where you see it says red and yellow, these are students who fell below the benchmark in in this in this measurement in NWA scores in math. And students that are in red are definitely in need. We're finding of tier three support, which would be our most intense support and that would be provided by an intervention specialist teacher, which is. The the position I'm proposing, not to be confused with an RTI educational technician. So our teachers, which Debbie is one is the one we have now, they provide like intense focus and they're highly trained in providing math support. So you could see if you just you can interpret the table. Our. RTI math teacher would provide all the tier three support. And help oversee all the tier two support being provided by the educational technicians who provide. Tier two in math. So you can see where it says total needing support tier two and three. And this is based on this year's data, 23 first graders, 19 second graders, 23 third graders, 24 fourth graders. And. And so of so of all those kids. 24 of those would require tier three support and. That level of intensity of support is typically four or five days a week for 30 minutes a day. So to provide that level of support, it takes a lot of time from one person's schedule. And so these numbers kind of outline the need to to provide. A high level of support to all who need it and help oversee and guide the instruction provided by ed text. We feel like that we easily could utilize two people. For this. So it goes back, this is just a little bit of data pointing out what I mentioned the last meeting that. We feel that we're under implemented in that intense level of math support. I, at this point, I think I'd move on from that question and then just see if anyone has a follow up. After. So question two. Permanent substitute position and you folks pointed out it's currently paid with COVID funds. And the question is, do I foresee similar needs for subs? And so. My answer is that ironically, like our needs for subs this year. Our need for subs is much, much lower than typical in a typical year. So. Our attendance rates are higher for staff. And I believe that the. And also in order to find subs, I think the high, high rate of pay. Through COVID is enabling us to to secure subs quite easily and 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 maintain and have the same folks come back. Really high quality subs coming back. A typical year covering classrooms is a constant struggle every day. So I anticipate much higher need for the long term sub position in the future. Than I do even this year, although it's been very important this year, it's it's. We've used that sub every day, but still the need is nowhere near, not even 50%. I don't even know if it's 25% of what we usually. Would need for subs for with the amount of absences we have. So number three. Impact of new guidance counselor. Again, there's a lot here and I'd like to thank Bree Gallagher and Megan O'Neil for helping to put this information together, our two guidance counselors. So the way we're using them this year, I'm going to kind of summarize. So it used to be Bree was K four and run and counseling individuals, small groups. And taking care of kids in crisis and all grade levels. And as you know, I mean, even just walking across Poncove takes a while. It's so it's such a long. Vast school and so she was servicing kids across the whole school. The way we're doing it now is. Megan is K one and half of two, Bree is half of two and three and four. And so what they've done here is is they've put really outlined what they're able to do now. So as you can imagine. They're they're able to, and they've given many examples here, they're able to contribute significantly to. Student needs one on one, small group, they're both teaching classes in classrooms to all students. They're highly involved in our DEI work, in our peaceful Poncove work, all building wide initiatives. They're really both key players and we feel fully implemented now that we have the two. If you, if you continue down. That to where it says students served, there's a heading on the next page. So they kind, they did outline some numbers that show that, you know, they have been in fact, as you would, as you would think. They've been able to really double and the need has always been there. And I know when we had one counselor. There was just a constant feeling of not being able to do enough, no matter how hard she worked. So we're feeling like this is a really great fit for our school and it was a, we feel like this was a really good decision to add the second counselor. And again, there's so much information you can read there. I am going to move on from that question. Okay, number four. Class size and staffing. So in my answer, you can see I just addressed, I assumed you meant classroom teachers. And I addressed. Number of students per teacher and the fact that I think the numbers. The numbers look great. They keep us within. Board guidelines and we really are. Want to be really protective of our relatively smaller class sizes, especially going into next year. At a previous board meeting, we talked about unfinished learning and anticipated unfinished learning that we're going to have to make up next year. And so these are the class sizes that I would like to see. And I feel like that there be the most will be the most effective at. Supporting those students. And, okay. Proposed in the increase in 5350. This is a great question and I apologize for not. The increase is is quite significant and I apologize for not not anticipating that and outlining it last time. So. These, what what has happened, there's a couple of things that's happened. We have. Purchased, I'll just go right down the list. These, the increases from last year include these $7,600. These are for Lucy Calkins, Reading, Writing and Phonics Units of Study video subscriptions. So. The we you we use for our curriculum, we use. The Lucy Conick Calkins units of study. Because of COVID. We explored. Using these videos, these are instructional videos where actually. Someone teaches a lesson, so a teacher can teach the lesson and then the teacher can send this video home of this lesson that is the same lesson that has been taught. And utilizing them through COVID, we, the teachers have realized that. They are really beneficial and can really envision using them from here on out. Now they're yearly subscriptions. So it's not just a one time purchase. So because I'm assuming too that they'll continue to update the videos and so it's a yearly subscription. So this is something that I. Worked with my team leaders and through them worked with all all teachers, grade level teachers, and they felt pretty strongly that they would love to continue to use these. To support students both in school and at home sometimes. $750 increase in STEM scopes digital subscriptions. So that's we use STEM scopes as our science curriculum. And we let and we use STEM scopes digital and it's just simply an increase in their price for the per student for their yearly subscription. It's quite a significant increase for one year. It's kind of surprising, but that's the price. Usually I would think that, you know, it would just be maybe a hundred dollars more, but it's a lot more. $750 is for DBQ. This is. Document based inquiry and it's this is something new because we are. Revising our social studies curriculum. And so for grades three and four. Our content leaders and working with myself and Kathy decided to utilize DBQ and so that's. It's $750 for an online subscription for social studies resources to support our new social studies curriculum. And then the biggie is the $14,000. This is Dreambox. So this is we, I talked about Dreambox last time. This is K four. This is the dynamic. Math app. That we are piloting this year and. This, this dream box would have been a plan with or without COVID. This was something that was in the works last year. And so this is just in addition to our our math. Resources so that all students can have another opportunity to practice skills at their level. So when I say dynamic. If it would depending on the level of the child, if they answer questions correctly, it gets more and more challenging. And if it gets too challenging, it backs up on its own. So that is. That's the increase. So that is a very significant increase of around 23,000 for. 5350. And. That's it for me, but I'm happy to answer questions now or later, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Very helpful. I just, I mean, this could be just me, but where do we find your written submission? I don't, I didn't see that. I don't know if that was distributed to us or it's not on the website under the agenda items.
Yeah, I was searching everywhere for it and I could.
Oh, my goodness, you should have stopped me. It didn't make it on.
Yeah. And in fact, for that matter, if there's any other written submissions. I don't believe that we would, we receive those from anyone except for Marcy. I don't know. There's a way to distribute those. It'd be good to get those up on the website at some point too for the members of the public.
You're muted. Yeah, we'll look those up and find them, get them up there.
Okay, great. Yeah, it'd be helpful to get those distributed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To anyone, yeah.
I thought the whole time.
I love hard copies too. I love hard copies too, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay. So moving on and again, it sounds like we, none of us got any kind of written materials. So if you have them. And you can refer to them, I guess we'll take a look at them later, but um, but just know that we don't have any materials at this point. So Troy.
All right. Hi. So I only have a page, you're only missing a page of mine because that's really all I have. So I only have three questions. And I think I'll just start with the one it was about related to budget. So the question was, please explain the reason for proposed increase. In line 6100 supplies budget. So if you go to that line, you'll see. It's kind of, I think, and Marcy can help me if if I'm wrong or if I if I get this wrong, but really it's it's the same request amount. And what happens is. You know, if you, if we go over in in one line, we have to transfer money from another line. No, none of our, none of our lines can be running the negative. So that's really what has happened here. So to make it simple. The line 6100 has no increase from the 2021 budget. It really was 64,044.13 cents. Reason it looks different is due to transferring money from 6100 supplies to 6400, which was books and periodicals. So if you look on there for 6400 way over on the right hand side, it looks like a negative 13 beside it for the column way to the right. And then the one right below it for $10,000, it's like a negative 68 beside it. If you add those two numbers up and add it to the second column of 49,000, that gets you to your 64,000. So it's an, it's actually the same exact amount budgeted. It's just sometimes unpredictable. You know, those happen to be increases in technology and books and online books and books and periodicals, which would make perfect sense for all the remote learning we're doing. So it's actually not an increase. It's just the way. Am I correct? If Marcy, you can jump in if I've got that wrong, but I believe that's the way why it looks like there is an increase. I think it could look on here. Like the current budget is 49,000 and I'm asking for 64 when reality is. That's where we're at right now because we've moved some money around. So it's actually the same request.
That's correct, Troy.
So. I think that's, I think that helps quite a bit. The next question was, please be prepared to present and talk about class size, teacher load and staffing. So according to the board policy and suggestion, class sizes, grades five through 12, class sizes should be in the range of 20 to 24. And teacher load, so the number I view that as a number of students, teachers are responsible for in a day is 75 to 90. In grade five for next year, it will have six, 114 students will have six teachers per class size of 19 and a teacher load of 95. The 19 is, you know, there's 19 kids in a class and the teachers teach five sections a day. So that's the 95. So we're just one student basically below the recommended 20 to 24 range. And we're just slightly outside of the teacher load of 75 to 90 with 95. Sixth grade has 109 students. That's the class that every year has kind of lot been, there's been a reduction in teachers, just like this year, my fifth grade has five. Next year that group moves and the number of teachers in sixth grade will reduce by one. Now. It's not a reduction to the budget because that teacher is going to move. We have to now get an extra fifth grade teacher back. So. It's just a movement of and reassignment of teachers. Nobody's, nobody's leaving. There's a lot of cost savings there. But so sixth grade next year, 109 students, five teachers for a class size of 21.8 and a teacher load of 109. Seventh grade. 129 students. And seven teachers for a class size of 18 and a teacher load of 92. And eighth grade is 123 students with again with seven teachers in the class size of 17. And the teacher load is 87.5. Now, why seventh and eighth grade has seven teachers? Is because we expanded our experiential learning team. So there's actually six regular eighth grade teachers. And then there's an additional eighth grade teacher teaching our experiential learning group. So that is how the seventh, the seven teachers came to be. And in seventh grade, we expanded last year, our experiential learning to to include seventh grade. So there's a teacher there as well. So that's why seventh and eighth grade, the average class size is in the 18.4 or 17.5. And fifth and sixth class size is a little higher. Teacher load, if when you get this paper and you see it, so the teacher load. For example, sixth grade has 109 students and that is outside of the teacher load range. Some days it's not 109, depends on like how many kids are going to band that day and some students are pulled out for special services, but that. On any given day, those teachers could be responsible for up to 109 students. So I know it's hard without seeing that in front of you, but essentially. It puts us within all those guidelines and really the only change to staffing is the movement instead of having five in fifth grade, we're now having five teachers in sixth grade. So and when you do get this paper, you'll see in seventh and eighth grade, it says the number of teachers is seven. And again, I would just remind you that that's because there's an additional program in seventh and eighth grade, which is experiential learning. And that that would be why. So when you look at it, if you see that and say, oh, I wonder why there's seven there, that's why, because it's additional programming. We, just as your policy states, we don't really account for the allied arts classes because the numbers would be way out of whack. Caitlin Ramsey's band class might have 80 kids in it. So that clearly would exceed the teacher load in class size. You know, so that those, for those reasons, those are kind of unique and special phys ed classes sometimes can have 30 students in them. So the allied arts classes are definitely more unique. And the one thing that is, I always like to remember is all allied, that's. It's a very general statement to say, but it's pretty accurate. Every allied arts teacher will basically see every student in our school at some point through the year or. You know, on a two day a week for the whole year, for example, phys ed. So. Our allied arts classes are much more challenging to figure out the number of students in class sizes. And I think it would look really bizarre to somebody if we listed them. So that's why they're not listed there. And then my last question, which is really the biggest one to me. How will the one year interventionist position fit into the current intervention structure at CMS? And I'd like to just start by giving you a quick update. We currently have two interventionists working. At the middle school and those two interventionists are responsible largely for math. But they also provide some reading and a little bit of writing intervention for students. And they provide actually a significant amount of executive functioning work with students. So they're not solely math, their plate is very full. And this year they are actually being utilized to teach some courses in order to get us so that we could be back in school with them, meet all the minimum guidelines. The next thing I'd really like to do is kind of say what intervention really means in in our school. Intervention is really targeted instruction to support students as they work to complete their learning. And it's very individualized. So it's something that would be really challenging to teach to a large group, has to be small groups. Preferably four, it would not be uncommon to walk by room and see six or seven in there. It's just more challenging and less independent, less personalized. And then really the key is intervention is not. Intended to be support for homework. So somebody's falling behind in their homework, really should not be going in getting intervention help. It's really for helping students and developing a specific program that will help them develop their skills so that they can meet the grade level standards. And in order to do that, the other real challenge with intervention. Is to not have it happen in place of their current math class. So if a student. Is going to get math intervention, they cannot be pulled out of their current math class, continue to miss those standards and work on other standards. So it has to be in addition to. So that that is really kind of the the groundwork that we're working with when we talk about intervention at the middle school. Is finding blocks of time where that works for kids at the same time without pulling them out of a whole bunch of other things. So so there's kind of a little bit of a balancing act. Now to get more directly to the question of how does it fit into our program? Really what we're. If you remember from last week, when Kathy, Jason and I presented. The data from the middle school NWA, if you remember those little towers or those bar graphs that were blue. And had the diamond, I think it was an orange diamond and that orange diamond was a predictor of growth. And what we realized in the past was that jump to sixth grade kind of always had a gap, but it was typically made up. And the last, according to the fall to fall testing, so really it was the spring COVID experience was included in that, but not the current COVID. Anything to do with that. What it really showed was in math, really none of our grade levels had met that expected growth. Now, that does not mean there were not students within there that made it. It just means that overall as a whole, as a class, they didn't make it as an average. So to me, that says that our 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 needs are could be great. And or they could be very minimal, but there's a lot more of them. So if I miss that by two points or five points or eight points, it's just not making it. And I I think. In the past, kids have to be significantly. Have some significant gaps in order to qualify for. Intervention and I fear that that could be a ball we chase for a long time if we dabble at the attempt of getting it caught up. So our goal, my goal and what I think we're going to do. If this position becomes a reality. Is work to reduce the class, use it. So this position would be providing intervention largely in math. And combination with the two existing positions. But I would like to use the two existing positions to provide an extra section of grade level math at each grade. Now, why that is, is because I think there's more than just the targeted kids. I think all kids could benefit from this. And it will, in the net effect will be a reduction in class size for math. For each grade level next year for grade level math, not taking into account accelerated students, algebra students, geometry students. They clearly are on a good positive path and making growth. So it's really about the grade level math, so fifth grade math, sixth grade math, seventh grade, eighth grade now. So for example, and I have this written out. For the coming year, grade five. The class size for math and every and all their other core content areas would be about 19 students per teacher. If I'm able to get this position and add an additional section of regular education math through one of our interventionists. That class size, class size would drop to 16. So. Every math class would drop by four students. So to me, that is, that's impacting every student in our school. Through hiring one person, not just impacting the kids that we target that may need the most work. So that's really the approach that that we want to take. Um, may need the most work, so that's really the approach that, that we want to take. And if every math class drops by four students in the fifth grade, all of a sudden the one-on-one attention, the more individualized work. Um, will definitely be kind of a tier-one intervention support right in the classroom. And it may not seem like a lot, but when you think about it, every class, so all of the sections would be four less students. That's a pretty big deal to me and it impacts all students that way, um, as opposed to a targeted few. So that's, that's that example, um, sixth grade would be very similar. Um, without that position in a more traditional intervention style of just adding an interventionist to targeted students. That would be a twenty-two, would be the class size for students in math. With that position, it would drop to eighteen, so again, about four students. In seventh grade, um, the average class size would be twenty-one. And with, with the additional interventionist, it would go down to seventeen. And in eighth grade, it would be twenty-one point two-five, and with the support, it would drop down to seventeen. So again, about a four-student difference per every grade level math class you walk into. That doesn't seem like a lot if you just look at it as, oh, seventeen to twenty-one, and you look at it as a one-to-one trade-off. But it's actually, every class is seeing that reduction in math. So, that's really how I would propose to use it, I think it would have the biggest bang for the buck. Um, and it would require our current two interventionists to continue on and teach one math class per grade level, you know. Um, next year, so an additional class, but I think that would be a positive, um, way of approaching this. And it might allow us to service all kids next year as opposed to, um, some targeted. Few according to N W E A results or, or whatever that might be. Um, and at the same time, it would not be, would not reduce the amount of intensive. Intervention that we would be able to offer students that were a little further, that had more needs, um, that will still be, be there. So that's really my goal. When you do get a copy of my paper, you're going to see, because, just because of the way I put it on here. Um, I don't want you to be confused, the, the math, this interventionist, when I just said class size in seventh and eighth grade was twenty-one or twenty-two. Without this position, if you look down for the, for, um, the teacher class size and, and ratio. You'll see class sizes of eighteen and seventeen in seventh and eighth grade math, and I just don't want you to be fooled or think I messed that up. It's because the experiential learning team students do not have math on team. So they go back to their regular seventh and eighth grade classes for that. So experiential learning students go back into their regular, with their, with their regular math teachers off-team. For that, so that is why in seventh and eighth grade, the math numbers are slightly higher than they are as, as just an overall average for the seventh and eighth grade. Um, so, I think that's it, that is definitely the way that we would like to move forward with that position. And I feel like it would allow us to impact a lot of, a lot more students, practically all students. On an everyday basis for the year, and I think we would make great gains. So that is, that's kind of, that's where I'm at, and if you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer them or wait, or however you, however you want to do it.
Thanks Troy, yeah, I think we're, we're going to wait and, um, when people are jotting them down and just, you know, apologize again that we didn't get those out. But this is going to give us an opportunity to, I think what we'll do at the next meeting is, um, is actually start with any more detailed questions. Now that, once the board has a chance to review the written materials, so we'll go through this again, we, but this is a helpful overview. Um, of that, but once we all have a chance to look at it, we may come back to each of you, um, once we, you know, review the written materials next week. So we'll start with that next week. But thank you very much, very helpful, and, um, now moving on to Jeff Shad.
Hi, so, um, I will make sure that you get, uh, written materials should be by tomorrow or the next day at the latest. Um, depending on when it all gets consolidated, sorry you didn't get that. Um, I had two questions, um, the first one is, please talk about how you foresee the one-year math and science support position working. Because I've also proposed that a position similar to what, uh, Troy and Jason have proposed for one year. A special class offered only next year, extra support in the achievement center. Um, so basically what do I see it looking like? Um, so I'll, I'll preface this by saying that I will probably be involved in the hiring of this position. And some initial thinking about what the position can look like, but I, I won't be here to do the actual implementation, so things could change. But I'll tell you what's on my mind. Um, and first I will say that there are two grade levels that I, I see a position focusing on. And that is ninth grade and tenth grade. Uh, tenth grade because our current ninth graders, um, in our likelihood will come into next fall, not really having had a typical. School year experience at Cape Elizabeth High School. Um, and so I think part of their transition to that and filling any, any gaps that they may have experienced. Uh, they, they, in my mind, will become a focus, and the other grade is the ninth grade. Um, the, and for them, it's really just to help them transition. Um, to the, to high school, um, particularly after a year and a half of. Um, uh, a very different experience in middle school and based on the N W A scores that, that Troy has shared with me and, and talked about again tonight. Um, so I think the grade level focus would be ninth and tenth grade. I think where, where the focus ought to be is in, um, on those skills. Where our kids have tended historically to not be quite as strong, our math program has always been really strong, but. It, and generally speaking, our kids tend to master the higher level conceptual skills pretty easily. Uh, where we sometimes find they struggle, i- and, and sometimes it's even with some of our higher achieving students. Um, it's, it can be with some of the underlying math skills that, that really reflects strong number sense or the lack of strong number sense. Um, and the skills that enable students to do math fluently without calculators. Not that we are abandoning calculators, they do have an absolute role, but, um, there are some skills that are certainly helpful. So the specific skills that I have in my mind are fractions, decimals, percents, proportional thinking and slope. The one that is most directly relevant, they're all directly relevant to both ninth and tenth graders. Uh, the one that's most directly relevant to tenth graders in particular, in particular because it has linkage to chemistry. Which is our tenth grade science course is proportional thinking. Um, the other four are, are spread evenly sort of between ninth and tenth grade and our physics, physics class. Um, which is our science class for ninth graders. Um, so what I would envision doing is sort of sometime towards the spring of this year, giving the students an assessment to see where they are. On some of those underlying mathematical number sense related skills. Um, and then, um, I, I would envision organizing two different kinds of sessions to help kids. One is sort of a three-week, two-hour-per-day math preseason. Um, that would essentially correspond to our athletic preseason, basically based on how kids have done. On an assessment that we give them in the spring, give to all students in the spring. And I think it'd be a great, great way for ninth graders, incoming ninth graders in particular, to be introduced to the high school. Um, the other time that I would envision using is, and again, this will. Um, make more sense for those of you who are parents of high school students or have been parents of ninth, of high school students. Is to use the off-lab periods in ninth grade physics and chemistry. Um, so the way it works is our physics and chemistry students have labs. One day in our four-day rotation for one semester per year, for half the year. Um, so the other two days of that rotation there in study hall. Um, but I think it would, it would nicely align students in getting extra math support. To what's going on in science and what's going on in math as well, if the time was actually grabbed out of. Um, those off-lab days which are otherwise study fall time for students. So, the person in the position I would envision would be. Tracking what students are studying in math and physics and chemistry, depending on what the grade level is. And sort of introducing concepts and, uh, to students and reinforcing concepts when they're really important. Actually, I forgot to mention one other, I, I mentioned fractions, decimals, percent and proportional thinking, I'm not sure I said slope. Slope is the other one, which relates to graphical understanding. Um, it's huge and huge in, in physics in particular, chemistry to some extent as well. And obviously in all the math classes that students would be taking in ninth and tenth grade. Um, so that's the way I would envision, um, organizing the time. And I would, I would think that if we can hire a, a teacher who's interested in teaching three weeks before school begins. And sort of a preseason model, then we could have that teacher end his or her, uh, school year three weeks early at the other end. So it's a sent, they're working essentially a regular school year. So that's the answer to the first question, um, it's not a final answer, there's lots of conversations still to happen with the math teachers and the science teachers. But that's the way I see, that's the way I would, I would see the need, that's the way I would see the time opportunities. Uh, to plug students into the need, um, without taking them away from any of their core classes in any way, shape or form. Um, so that's, that's that question. The second question is, um, your new, his, new programmer position request forms were not complete. Um, please rank your precedent, program and position requests. Um, so my, the reason why they were not complete, that was, that was not an oversight, that was sort of deliberate. Is because I'm lacking some fundamental information to be able to make me, allow me to make a final determination about that. And that is, that we don't have numbers for courses for next year, we don't have student sign-ups for next year yet. We actually are just starting that process this week, uh, before the budget gets, has to get finalized. I should be able to, um, give the board exactly where those numbers stand. But, but if I make, if I operate on the assumption that there will be enough students who sign up to take the new art elective that we proposed. Um, and we have enough students, uh, to, to take the two additional computer science. Of computer programming offerings that we proposed as well. Um, then the order that I would, I would say in terms of priorities are number one, art, that's a one-tenth art position. Uh, number two, computer science, and number three, the math science support position. Um, and I would say a silent number four that's there that I have not requested in the budget, but I just wanted to mention it. Because this is the first year for some of you veteran board members, you'll know that I, every year I've been coming back and asking for a regular ed literacy support teacher position. And for the last several years, I've had to take it out at some point, this year I didn't even put it in because this other position seemed more pressing. Um, I suspect in the future that position request will come before the board again. But again, assuming we had, we would have enough students to justify the addition of the positions, and I think we will. I would say number one, our one-tenth art position, number two, the four-tenths, uh, or two-fifths computer science position. And number three would be the math and science support position. And I think those are the two questions I had, so.
Great, thank you very much, Jeff. Uh, Dell. You're here, Dell P V.
Thanks Phil, uh, I'm actually going to share my screen.
Um, okay, so Phil, you're going to have to give Dell, make Dell a co-host.
I already did it in the beginning.
Oh, you're good. Okay.
It says I'm disabled right now.
I can do it. Okay.
Oh, okay, so he's a co-host.
She'll be all set, yeah. One of my new skills tonight is how to make someone a co-host. Okay, here we go.
Can you, uh, folks see that?
Yes.
All right, uh, so my first question, uh, was, uh, looking at numbers. And I think I probably gave them to you verbally last time, and so the first question was if I could. Um, put them in written format so that you folks could see them, I will certainly share, um, this very brief PowerPoint with you as well. Um, but this kind of is a rundown of the number of staff that we have in special ed. And of course, keeping in mind that all of these staff members are listed in each of the building administrators reports as well. This is just, um, pointing out the ones that work in special education. So our special education teachers, we have thirteen, our, uh, we have ed techs, uh, we have twenty-four. And they're spread between schools, they're, the re, um, the numbers shift from year to year based on student needs. Speech pathologists, we have three point five. Occupational therapists, we have two. Physical therapists, we have just one point four individual. Uh, the B C B A, the Board Certified Behavior Analyst, we have, it's a one full-time position. But forty percent in special ed and eighty percent in regular ed. So she works, uh, between all three buildings. And she's, obviously can work with any student within those buildings who may be struggling behaviorally, does not have to be in special ed. Psychologists, we have two. Special education admin assistant, that's Jess over at central office, we have one. Social workers, we have three point five throughout the district that work for special ed. We have additional social workers that work for regular education as well. Director of Special Services, one, and a total staff district-wide are fifty-two. Uh, staff, I'm requesting for the upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two school year are fifty-four. And that includes one ed tech three that was already in the budget and kind of slated for last year. And I think I mentioned this at our last meeting that, uh, some of the C D S students that were, uh. Slated to join us, uh, did another year with, um, child development services. And so they will be with us this coming year, and so that position was left in the budget. And, um, will be, uh, supporting some of those students. And the other, uh, the other, um, position was the point five academic evaluator. To fulfill, uh, some of the evaluation needs. And. The current enrollment. Uh, it's cut off on my screen, I don't know if it is on yours, but I believe it's a one seventy-one. Um, Poncova is fifty-two students that receive special education services, middle school is fifty-eight. At the high school is sixty-one, and we have one student outplaced at this time. One of the things that was asked is, uh, what needs are being addressed and what needs are, uh, not being met. Uh, as far as needs, the provision of free and appropriate publication, uh, public education for all students. In the least restrictive setting and environment, I add that piece in. Because, um, many of the ed techs, particularly at the elementary level, allow for those students. To be with their gen ed peers as much as possible. Uh, all teams at all three schools work very hard to do this. Uh, research certainly supports that the more time that they can be with their gen ed peers and learn the skills from those peers, the better off we are. And, um, for the most part, whenever possible, we can do, we do that. Uh, many times this, the skill lags that, that are being addressed are too great and do require pullout. Additional support for teachers who have high volume of acumen, academic testing. To limit the number of, uh, intrusions or interruptions of service delivery. And by that, um, the majority of our referrals do come from the elementary level. And those elementary teachers, uh, not only have to reevaluate their students, current students on their caseload. Every three years they get reevaluated, but also the new referrals get divvied up and split between them as well. Um, and then I just mentioned that this would allow for continuity and consistency of all I E P driven services and supports. Unmet needs, there are none listed here because legally I am not allowed to have unmet needs. And so that's why I mentioned that we're meeting the needs of the I E P driven services. Um, there was a question, the, the third question was around E S Y or extended school year services. So extended school year services, some of our students that receive special education. Uh, demonstrate significant regression whenever there's breaks or interruptions in the specially designed instruction that's being provided. And for those students who, um, also have, uh, significant recoupment time. And recruitment times generally takes, it takes more, several weeks to get back what they've lost. Those students qualify for what's called the extended school year services. And it's, uh, determined on a very, uh, individual basis from student to student. And that's the I E P teams that determine that. And, uh, extended school years, services are all about maintaining skills, not necessarily about developing new skills. Where does it occur? Historically, it's a, uh, the program has been down at the high school, we've had one program. Um, and, um. The different grade levels obviously are. the different grade levels obviously are broken broken out. We've been very fortunate that we've had adequate staffing in the past, and I certainly hope that that continues into the future. But certainly not the case in some districts. And I just think we're very fortunate that we have dedicated staff that are willing to, obviously, this isn't part of their contracts. This is something that they volunteer for. And they do get compensated for it. And let's see, when does it occur? Generally, it occurs right after the Fourth of July, and it generally goes for four weeks. It's four days a week, four hours a day. It's in the mornings from eight thirty to twelve thirty. And that's that's historically what it's been in the past. For this summer, there was a question as to what it might look like this year. I think well, of course, I'm certainly hoping so last summer, just so everyone knows, it was a hundred percent remote. And so that was extremely difficult, but staff again did a wonderful job of basically being flexible enough and parents were wonderful as well, and many of the students did well during their summer ESY last year. But this summer, the plan is for somewhat of a more robust extended school year in that the number of students participating will most likely be a bit higher than they normally would be. And of course, what exactly the programming looks like will also be dependent on where we're at with regard to COVID. We certainly try to have social components built into our extended school year. Where some students are slated primarily for academics such as math and or literacy skills. Other students maybe it made the focus maybe on social skills and of course getting them out in in the community is one of the goals. And of course, it's yet to be seen as to how much community involvement will be able to access or provide. And but hopefully, that'll be part of the programming. And though, Phil, that was my three questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dale. And that was helpful to see that up there. Okay, I think Noah is here, and we'll move right on to Noel.
Thanks, Phil. I only had one question. Says, when will you be able to answer the question mark with regards to replacing the seventh and eighth grade laptops? Basically, we're waiting on information from Milty, which is a main DOE initiative that's been in the works for quite a long time. It's really valuable program and they survive and they help provide the devices for seventh and eighth grade. Right now, it's in, it's called Milty two point oh. It's in the RFP stage, and I think the RFP stage is the first week of March. And after that, is a speculation that we'll know a little bit better the first week in April or the second week of April. So basically, I'm just waiting for that decision up to the state.
Okay, thanks. Great.
Phil?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but I missed I missed one of my questions.
Okay, yeah, let's go back to you.
So there was one other question on space. What are the workspace challenges that arose during COVID? So as far as space, the pieces that were arose during COVID, many of our ed techs who during a traditional year may be supporting students in the classroom had to not only do that when the students were in in person, but also had to pipe out instruction remotely. So trying to find space for ed techs to be able to do that. I mean, technology was great. We we were able to get, you know, headsets and they got new laptops. And so the technology piece was great, but we still needed at least a quiet space for them to be able to do that. And each building administrator has been wonderful in finding those spaces. And I know it's been quite a challenge, particularly at Poncove, where there wasn't a whole lot of extra spaces to begin with. But I know Jason's been very creative with like signouts for the spaces that were available and, you know. So they they have they have kind of found their little nooks here and there that they're able to provide instruction and do it effectively. Prior to that, I mean, I overall, I spaces is definitely an issue at all three buildings. The adminis- building administrators have done a wonderful job of making special ed a priority. And that there is adequate space for everyone at the buildings. I mean, there has been, you know, and even recently, like in the last year or so, you know, rooms kind of carved up to, you know, where there was open space to try to slide folks in. And I appreciate that. And I know Perry's Perry's done that in, well, the two I'm thinking of at middle school in Poncove. Just in the last two years, both of them, you know, they grabbed a little bit of space where they could add additional well, whether it's a tiny conference room or a small office space. And it's greatly appreciated. The staff that I went through earlier. Most all of them, you know, they all require space to do their job. And many of them require a confidential space to do their job. And so it has been, it has been quite challenging. And again, I would, I am very thankful to the building administrators who have been very creative in problem solving around this. Thank you.
Thanks for circling back to that, Dale. Yeah, and bringing that up. I'm glad you were able to address that. So Perry.
All right, I have two questions. There's a little bit of added questions within the questions, but I'll kind of knock it out for you. I apologize. I'm going to read what I typed up earlier as my answers to the questions. It's to keep me on track and keep rambling on too much. Please talk about red items or any important projects you are planning on addressing. Why we need to do this work, even if the buildings are, or even if new buildings are on the horizon. The answer to that is, I noted in the, as noted in the facility needs assessment report, there are three levels of priorities given to the listed items that are needing attention. The items in red would be considered a non-code compliant or life safety concern and are therefore in the highest priority. This list here is going to be what we are currently working on or what is planned for the summer, or it may have even been been completed. The middle school kitchen cooler replacement, it's a walk-in cooler and walk-in freezer that is currently in progress. The cooler is installed and is running. We are just at the point where we need to put the shelving back in, put what food we have back into it and close it up. And tomorrow they'll be installing a sprinkler system within it. And that that project will then be complete. High school roof complacency issue that is part of the SRRF project and is on schedule to be put out a bit out to bid for a second time. I believe in April is what we agreed on, but coming shortly. High school public address system, the replacement of that was completed. The high school metal dust collection system is again an SRRF project up and coming. A high school ventilation system for the welding shop. Again, an SRRF project. Middle school repairs to the elevator machine room. That is a code complacency issue issue and is in the proposed capital improvements budget for twenty twenty-two. Let's see, installation of new emergency showers and eyewash stations that is scheduled for the spring SRRF project. Improved door security that is in the new capital improvements budget proposed for twenty twenty-two. Improved security camera surveillance is scheduled for the summer. And a middle school, the installation of a middle school kitchen hood with fire suppression in the special ed space at the middle school. Though that's just some of the bigger projects going on right now. There are projects listed in red that are I would consider a sizable project and would need to be done under a larger renovation or building replacement. These are some of the, I'll say, medium size and would fall under a capital improvement size budget. I I did also want to point out that, you know, we frequently, I won't say daily, but weekly, we do run into what I consider high priority red projects, emergencies that come up. And, you know, they they rise to the top as well. The the li- the list is kind of having your car scheduled for a repair because your engine light came on. And what we run into sometimes weekly is, okay, we have that scheduled, we're on our way to the repair, but we got a flat tire on the way. The flat tire now becomes a high priority as well. And that's that's just kind of what we run into on a daily basis when dealing with the older buildings. My second question, are there any open positions in your department that you have not been able to fill? Are subs available? And what is the impact of this? We currently have a night custodial position and a night maintenance position open. The the trouble hasn't been not being able to find people, and I'm hoping that stays the case. It is more of just a not having the time due to the increased challenges of the pandemic, the retirement of Janet, Pat and Bernie. And training of the new staff that took their positions. It's just been flat out busy and especially with the night maintenance person, I'm going to be looking for the kind of the perfect candidate for that position. It's somebody that I need to have full trust in, but also know that they have the skills to carry themselves single-handedly alone at night. That that will all be coming within the next one or two months to finally get those positions filled. Substitutes have always been a challenge at Cape, and I believe this, in this is my opinion, but I believe that is due to similar positions that I find in surrounding schools that are also available. So there's, there's a lot for people to pick from that are looking for jobs. If you pull up serving schools, you'll find custodial positions littered all over for just about every district. So it's just a competition. Cape's a little further away from everything else, so it's a, you know, the Scarboroughs in South Portland and where most of the people live all tend to, I believe, head towards that direction. And the impact is always a challenge. Whenever somebody's out, it directly affects the the remaining crew that is working and usually ends up taking away from some of their normal nightly duties because they share the workload then of the missing staff member. And that's that's also not just with cleaning, but the custodial staff also does setups and teardowns for your, maybe a sporting event or any type of meeting, anything that's going on when we have a board meeting back in the buildings, they do those type of things as well. So it's when when we lose people due to an absence and we don't have anybody to replace them, it affects the whole crew. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Perry. Kathy. I'm next.
Yes, I am. Thanks, Phil. Good evening, everyone. I have one question, which is whether I could explain a bit about the proposed increase in the stipend line budgets in all three schools. So that increase in the stipend lines is due first to CBA, the Collective Bargaining Agreement negotiated increases. Secondly, we are required by the state to provide a peer mentor for all new staff. That stipend is negotiated by the Cape Elizabeth Educations Educators Association. And you know, it's hard in December to know exactly how many new peer mentors you're going to need. And so we just put three in for each school. So it's really just a guesstimate. We can start to refine it as retirement come in. But but that that was part of that too. And then finally, that increase was due to the fact that we created four new K-12 content leader positions. We have in each school either department chairs or content leaders in the core content areas of English, math, science, social studies and more languages. And what we've been lacking is a way to bring together the teachers in art and music and library, technology, health PE across the three schools. However, since I put that in that original quest request budget, I've had a number of conversations with those teachers and think that we can actually meet that need that I'd originally anticipated in a different way. So I think we're going to be withdrawing that, which would be a savings of six thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. So you'll be getting that when you get Marcy's addenda. So that was the one question that I had, but I also thought I would talk about a second change you're going to see that I I think that you've been alerted to, and that is we are proposing a change in the English learner new position request. So originally, we had, I talked with you about converting the point five EL ed tech position to a point five EL teacher position for a total of one point five EL teacher position. After talking with the two EL teachers, we have agreed that we would be better able to meet our students' needs if we increased one of the point five EL teacher positions to a full-time position and then reduce the other to a point two and maintained that EL ed tech. The benefit of this is that we would have seven hours of additional support for our English learners. We would have three staff members instead of two, which would provide greater flexibility in meeting our students' needs. And best of all, well, perhaps not best of all, but an additional benefit is that the solution would be more cost effective for the district because of the difference in the salary and benefits of the of the various personnel. We would actually realize a savings of three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. If if we adopted that that change instead of the original one I came to with you. So yes, I think I've just saved you ten thousand dollars if you weren't expecting, so I'll end right there.
Well, that's that's good news. I appreciate that. Looking forward to the addendum on that. Thank you, Kathy. Peter, see Peter here. There he is.
Yeah, hi. I just had one question. Please provide the staffing numbers and their locations. So nutrition staff has eleven employees. We have one assistant director that's full-time and myself. It's a third time nutrition director. Six of the staff work at the Poncove in middle school kitchen. And currently I have five at the high school kitchen with actually one of those being a floater in between each building. And of those nine and nine employees work over five hours a day. And I have two that are part-time. This this year, there's a reduction of two staff from the previous year. As we had a retirement the previous year and we didn't replace, and then we had one leave before the COVID hit, and we did not replace that person either. So that's what we have for our staff.
Thanks, very straightforward. And Donna.
So my question is about the first one is, is it equitable, reasonable to have a permanent substitute for one school, but not the other? So as you know, when we start working on our first requests, original request budget, principals put in their requests for what they feel are the priorities for meeting the needs of their students. So Jason put in for a permanent sub and the other The other two principals did not put in for a permanent sub. So that's the story on that. It wasn't that we. That everyone felt that they needed a permanent sub. So, um, the answer is that, um, because it was requested. So, um. I think, I think that's the answer to that. Uh, please talk about a little more about your vision for the. Director of, uh, technology and we're now calling that. Uh, Director of Educational Technology, right Kathy? Uh, Kathy and I spent some time today working on the. Job description for this position, which we are going to share with the technology committee that is finally meeting tomorrow. So, um, the tech integrators did a little work on that. Um, and then submitted something and we took some ideas from some other districts and compiled it today. So. We are, we decided today that we would like to call it the Director of Educational Technology. So really that person would, um, would focus on using technology and education throughout our district. Working with the curriculum. Person, um, person in charge of curriculum, the Director of Teaching and Learning, Kathy, to, um. Work on the, the curriculum of for technology, for technology in the, in the district to create a really. Cohesive and coherent curriculum. And that work has been started, um, and really needs to be continued. In order to make a, um, a really cohesive experience from K to 12 in technology and prepare our students for. Going out into, into the world, what they're, what they'll need as an adult. Right now, um, as you know, we have the, our Director of Technology, Noel, works with. Has to work with the town and keep all the systems running in the town as well as the school. And I, I really feel that my vision is that we have the Director of Educational Technology that, that can focus on. Technology in an educational, uh, with an educational lens. Looking at all the programs, uh, the software, um, in the schools and kind of coordinating that. So really, really working on, um, technology for education. And, uh, looking at the technology program and constantly analyzing it for, I'm trying to think of the things in the. In the, um, job description. It's quite a lengthy job description and it will come to you. But I think it's a really good job description. So, um, I think as we develop our technology program. Jeff has talked about adding a bit to, um, to one of the teachers', uh, time because we know that. We really need to strengthen our technology program. So this person would be overseeing that. They would oversee the, uh, tech integrators. We would share, um, the. The, the guys who keep us running. I'm not sure what their title is, but, um, the Connor, Jasons and Matthew Youngs. We would share them with the town, continue to share them with the town and, and our technology integrators would stay in their schools and, and the. The Director of Educational Technology would work with the principals in developing programs and doing the supervision and evaluation of those people. It would be a. A team. Team process for evaluation and supervision of, of. Of those, of the technology integrators. So, uh, you'll, you'll see more when you look at the job description, but it is, it's quite a lengthy job description, but. I think it will really move us forward, um, in the area of technology and, and just make such a better experience for. Our students. So we're taking the job description to the technology committee tomorrow morning to. For their, um, for their view, uh, and their feedback. So more to come on that. Hopefully we can get that job description, um, to the board by March. So can you explain the increase in the proposed, uh, three thousand professional services budget line for the single audit for federal grants? And Marcy, um, feel free to jump in here, but, um, we, we. We received a lot of grant funding this year. Our CRF grants, uh, for COVID. Put us over the limit of what you need for a single audit. And we think this will be a one-year. A one-year deal, but we will have to have an audit of these grants because we went over eighty-five hundred. Dollars. So, um, I don't know, Marcy, if you want to say anything else about that, but we did make some cuts in some other lines. To try to make up for, um, the increase in that line. We didn't get it as a flat funding, but, um, we did. Get it down to an ad increase of, uh, twelve hundred ninety-five dollars. So, um. Do you want to say anything about else about that, Marcy?
I think that's good, Donna. And you're correct. It would just be for one year because we don't anticipate going over the threshold of seven hundred and fifty thousand. In the future, I mean, unless we do, that's great. That'd be awesome. But right now we're thinking it'll just be a one-year audit. Because of the grants that we just received. There were over the hundreds, the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So in regard to sharing costs with the town and this gets a little complicated at times. But, um, some funds, uh, will go to the technology director position. Will the new tech. Director be able to assume all IT responsibilities of the current tech director? Will the town director continue to, to provide IT infrastructure support, uh, that is network support? So Matt and I continue to talk about this and we met some more today to talk about it. Where, uh, we are still working on this, but currently. Um, our thoughts are again that we will share the three support positions, which is Matthew, Jason and Connor. So we will split the costs of those. Between the town and the school as we do now. We would keep that exactly, um, the same as we do now. The school, uh, the school department, um, educational technology director. Would oversee the school department website, analyze systems and programs. And he would, that person would be in our budget. The town has, um, they really, Matt really hasn't formalized his plans about what he's going to do. He has a couple of different ideas. But the town would. That would be in the town budget. Um, the, the Director of Educational Technology would not be supporting. The town systems, for example, the fire department, this, the, uh, technology for the fire department, the technology for. The police department, those things. That person would only be working, uh, with the school department. Technology. So I think I covered everything for that question. Yeah. So that person would, would, um, would be doing infrastructure support, but with, for the schools and not for the town. Uh, relief funding, if there's additional COVID relief funding during the school year. Have the needs been identified and is there a plan for how it can be used? We are waiting for additional COVID relief funding. Um, I just heard on the radio today that that bill is. Being worked on. Um, so we have no answers to that. So we can't count on that. Two of the math support positions, um, that you heard, the one at the high school and the one at the middle school are one-year positions. And I'm thinking that if we hear about COVID funding before. Before those positions are technically in the budget, that we could. Apply that money to fund those positions and that would, uh, lower our, our budget. In the past with the, uh, with the COVID money, you could not use it for anything that's in the budget. So there's going to be a race between whether we hear from the COVID, from, uh. About more money from COVID or whether we actually have to put those positions in the budget. And if we actually have to put those positions in the budget. Then we can't use, uh, COVID money to fund that. So, um, I'm hoping that we will hear that we're getting more money. And that would reduce our budget by two positions. Um, and because there, I feel comfortable, usually I don't like to put. Use grant money. They call it the cliff because you get used to having that person and then. It's hard to put them in your, uh, local budget, but. Knowing that those are one-year positions or going in with a thought that they're one-year positions, I feel comfortable doing that. So we will have to wait and see on that. Um, otherwise, um, we can always find ways to. To use that extra funding and Marcy and I are pretty creative in that. So, um, if we, if we do happen to get. Extra or additional, uh, COVID relief fund, funding, we would be happy to come up with an application and apply for that funding. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Marcy.
Thank you, Phil. So, um, I thought I would respond probably to the questions directly. In reference to the audit, the checks and balances for our accounting procedures and the audit controls for the activity funds. So, um, in our audit report, it is mentioned that we are a small operation and, and even though we are a small operation, we still. Try to maintain the checks and balances as much as possible in the areas of accounts receivable, accounts payable. And payroll. And luckily, we don't have a lot of contact with accounts receivable, um, cash in our office. And when we do, we have the checks and balances in place where two signatures are required when we, when we receive the money. And we have the town finance director now, who then takes our deposits and verifies. Our receipt of the money as well. So then he is in charge of, uh, making sure that the bank reconciliation takes place and the money is deposited. Payroll actually is audited by human resources manager, um, our payroll coordinator. And then I'm also overseeing the operations. So that's how payroll is monitored. And with accounts payable. This is a critical operation to make sure we have not only the authorization on the purchase orders. But I make sure at this point in time that we have two signatures from the department director and then I sign off. And then we have our school board signatures as well. So, um, that's a huge area that the auditors pay attention to in the accounts payable side. So that's critical for our checks and balances to make sure that any check request or any, any check, any disbursement going out. Is signed by at least two people in our office and then reviewed so that my work isn't reviewed by our governing board. And then the audit controls for the activity funds. Um, we have the, uh, the two items that come up consistently. And the first item is the use of gift cards. The second item is timeliness of deposits. So we are trying to aim for a perfect report next year. That's our goal. And we will see it. I'm determined that we'll see it. It's hard with activity funds and anyone can tell you that activity funds are a hotbed for. Problems with, with audits. So if we can keep getting these down to next year at the most one comment. And the following year, zero, that's our goal. That's my target. And, um, I've been in communication with our administrative assistants from the three schools. And, uh, at last year, it was last January that I met with them. This year I've been in contact with them and we are having a Zoom meeting. Next week and we're making a commitment to, um, have an initial meeting next week to discuss. The fact that the use of gift cards is a sacrifice or the, uh, removing the use of gift cards, the sacrifice, but we're going to talk about that and why. And we're going to do that in person and go over, go over how that impacts the overall financial situation for the school. And just giving a global picture of that. And then the timing of the deposits, um, I've explained to you, our admin assistants. That I'm always available and also our finance director for the town has said that we can make sure. That they can drop deposits off at town hall. That way we can have a timely deposit every day. That's my goal has always been every day when it comes to activity funds, that money is in the bank by the twenty-four hour period. So we now have two options that we're going to propose to the admin assistants and we're going to talk about that next week. And then, um, have more frequent, um, time to touch base about this so that we can kind of get this. In the right direction for Cape Elizabeth. And like I said, it's a ambitious goal and you know it's bold, but we can do it. And so what else would you like me to address with that, Phil? The two questions and then the packet of information that I provided this afternoon. Is, um, these are really dense subjects, really intense things that I know that are coming up in the future. And as, um, Donna had mentioned, all of the subjects that we have scheduled, I can go into detail next week. And then whatever other nights that we have scheduled, specifically our fund balance report, our, um, audited fund balance report. Our nutrition services deficit, um, situation and our options with that. The packet has a graph of the fund balance trend. So we'll talk about that in more detail. I, I picked a few years that I think that we would want to strive for. With the trend of the use, the percentage use of fund balance during a period of five years. So I think that we could talk about that at our next meeting and depth. And it's this, it's, I love this subject, but I know this could be overwhelming. For everyone in one night. So you guys can decide how many nights you want this divided out. And the ED two seven nine is another one of our favorite. Subjects. I love that one. And in that, um, I was asked to give, uh, history. So I, what I've done is in your packet. You have a history of, by itself, the state subsidy for, uh, ten years. E two seven nine report. And then I also wanted to include, I thought it would be interesting. I think, um, one of the questions was to provide a school funding comparison history report. So I thought it would be interesting for us to see just how much, um, over the years for property taxes versus. The state subsidy versus fund balance use. So that gives you a picture of, of how committed the community is. In making sure the, um, excellence of Cape Elizabeth schools continue. And then the final chart I have is showing the fixed cost. Graph, the pie chart. And we can go over that too another night as well. And it shows. Our, our largest chunk, of course, goes to salaries and benefits and contractual salaries and benefits. So it's a, it's a thick packet and at any point in time, um, in between the times that we go into. Diving deep into these, you can feel free to call me with your questions. If you see something that looks funny or if you want more information. I'm here to, to talk about it and you'll have to probably put a timeline on me and how much I'll start talking about it. So. What else do you think you would like to hear from me tonight, Phil?
Well, thank you. I know you were going to go into more detail next week and that's probably why, yeah. Um, so this, and you, and you did, um, center on this tonight. So, I mean, you know, board members could have questions. We're going to open up the questions here in a minute. Or wait till next week. But next week, just so you can maybe preview for next week. The two big topics that you'd like to go into, just because they may, um, they may, uh. Influence whether people have questions now or what they want to wait. But I think you had mentioned to me, we're going to go into a little more detail on the school funding formula itself in the, in the ED. And you seventy-nine form, two seventy-nine form. Um, and then also our fund balance issues. You're going to tackle those separately next week, the fund balance and our options for using the fund balance on the projects. Is that right? Next week?
That's going to be a big decision for everyone, um, is the use of the fund balance as we move forward with the total amount of expenditures. And that's why I did that, uh, trending, the forecast and, uh, the percentages used in the past. Kind of in the middle of the last ten years or so to maintain a healthy fund balance and what, what I think we would want to work towards. And I think that we could just start thinking in terms of. What kind of decision you want to make, um, in the use of the fund balance. So that's why I added the chart showing. The, the average percentage used during the time that was a really healthy maintenance of fund balance. Before you got hit really hard with that loss of state subsidy where things got tough. And so. Right now we have budgeted a thirty-nine percent use of our fund balance, just to give you that perspective. So you have the option to increase that use and we'll dive into that deeper next week if you like, um, to start thinking about it, food for thought. But the unassigned fund balance is, um, enough right now that you can start thinking in, in terms of. Using the six hundred thousand that I have just as a placeholder for now. Or if you would like to be more comfortable in taking that down even more. Or if you would like to increase it. And what I could do for next week is, um, play around with the numbers in terms of how it affects your percentage. So I think that's what I'll do for our time next week. I'll put together a little chart of. of what it would show if you decrease the existing expenditure of the existing fund balance amount with the expenditures the way they are. And I'll compare that to what we have in the budget at 600,000 fund balance and what it would look like if you went a little higher. So does that, I think that would be helpful.
That would be helpful. Yep. And, and you may get into this next week, but there, is there a sort of best practice recommended percentage to keep your fund balance?
Well, there's definitely one thing that we have to keep in mind that the state would require us to not have over 3%. 3% of our operating budget right now would be 854,000. The state would require that over three years, we would have to make sure we have it under that amount of 854,000. So we know for sure, we can't keep an unassigned fund balance in excess of 3% of our overall budget. So that we know for sure. If you look at a comfortable position over time, it's, it's a good idea to have at least in my opinion, and this, this can vary and you guys can have a different opinion of this too. Because this is, this is definitely your decision to make. But a nice, healthy fund balance in reserve of at least 300 to 500,000 is a nice plan in case state subsidy drops in the future. But again, this is completely something that you all will want to think about. You know, and collectively, individually to think about for the, for the future. Now that we have an opportunity to have this fund balance in a situation where you can either use it or maintain a healthy portion of it for the future, just to be safe. I think it's a good position right now for you to be in, to think about which way you want to go with it. In addition to this, what you're going to want to be thinking about in the back of your head too, for the next few weeks is the issue of the nutrition services deficit that comes into play with our fund balance use. Right now, the reason why I picked 600,000 was because, and cut me off, Phil, at any time. Okay. Just cut me off.
Yeah, no, this is fine. We, we still have some minutes here.
Okay. Cause I'll keep rambling.
This is helpful to get us ready for questions for me at least for next week.
Yeah. Basically, I budgeted the 600,000 with the thought process that it would cover the concept design fee for the architects and engineers, if you approve that process. And it would cover the nutrition services deficit of almost 300,000. That was the, that was the thinking behind it. But you do not have to fully fund the deficit in one year. The auditors will allow you to spread the deficit over three years. The state is asking us to pay off nutrition service deficits. So we're kind of in between. So start thinking about that. We're, we're kind of in a pole here. The state wants us to pay off the deficits. The auditors will allow us to carry the deficit. But at the same time, I also want to emphasize that when we carry a deficit, we are also, the reality is that the costs of the nutrition services programs are they're costly with, with the way things go with salaries and our, and our program is doing far better than, than our surrounding areas. So we have, we're in an excellent position with, with what it's costing us. But the reality is that it is going to continue to cost us some money. So right now I'm hoping that our, our deficit for the end of this year will be in the 50 to $80,000 range. And that's something to think about. So we're kind of chasing the deficit until we can get it to a funding level, which I believe would be a little higher than what we're doing right now. Right now we're at $100,000 a year funding level. So it's kind of something to think about too, in a, in a really serious way of how we want to approach this. Does that make sense? I know you guys will have a lot of questions about this and that it's going to take a lot of talking.
But, no, and that's what we do. We do.
And I know, I know I'm throwing a lot at you guys right now. I'm throwing a lot of numbers.
It's great. No, and actually I'm starting to have a number of questions, but before I do, because I could probably ask a number of questions in a row, I'm going to actually ask the board if they have questions first. We have 25 minutes we can use up tonight. Or we can, or if you, you prefer to think this through and digest it and see the written materials, you can ask later, but I do want to open up an opportunity. If you want to maybe raise your hand to keep it a little bit organized. If anyone has a question. Have any of the administrators at this point, this is the general question time. I mean, we might not. Well, I just have, I have one. And I think we may have talked about it a bit last time, but this is going to be helpful for us, I think, to T S F on this conversation about the fund balance and the nutritional services. And I think it'd be helpful just to get a little more background. I mean, I've only been on for a year about the nutritional services deficit issue. And that may be too much for you to answer tonight. If it is, that just let me know, we can prepare for next week. But whether it's you, Marcy or Donna, or if it's, or if it's Peter, but just to, I'd like to sort of know how that happens, you know, what's the cause of it? It sounds like we are doing better than other districts, but it's, it seems like it's a systemic problem. And how, and this is a question I've heard sort of just even on the news. Obviously we all know that, that we had COVID funding for school lunches, but that doesn't seem to fully affect, there's still a deficit. So I, I just get a little, a better understanding of that. And then maybe we can get into how to address it going forward.
I'd like to make one comment about that too. If you guys don't mind me jumping in on the, the COVID funding unfortunately hasn't helped us in the area of salaries and wages for nutrition services. What I'm hoping, my, my hope is this next round, Donna, I don't know, maybe you'll hear something too. They will hopefully let us have an opportunity to offset some of the costs that we are facing. It's bottom line, and Peter, he might be still on here. Peter, you can help me with this, but it's, it's the cost of salaries and wages. And it's, it's across the country from what I.
Right. I mean, one of the things that I can talk about right now is like a month ago, Falmouth was over $500,000 in debt. So with our, our salaries and wages, obviously I can't control that. I've obviously put myself down to a third time and eliminated two positions. So my staffing is down, but our numbers are down. So fortunately we were able to get our waivers and get our subsidies. So we are getting some revenue, but we're not getting any other revenue whatsoever from any other food purchases or catering or anything that we've always done. And one of the things with the deficit, this is built up over time. And I mean, this is something that is, has been years in the making because like Marcy said, the state has, has said that they're supposed to pay the deficit off over, over the end of the year. That has not been done in several years. And also over the audits over the past several years. I mean, for the first, I believe eight years I was there, we ended up with a surplus. But then as salaries had, had gone up and there was never a budget that was in place for me. So there was no money that was ever set aside. It was always like I, I tried to make even. So what has happened over the course of the years is I have almost all of the employees that I have have been there for 15 plus years. And obviously their pay is a lot higher than other surrounding districts. So you know, I'm, I'm kind of in a catch 22. I have great people that are experienced, but I also have high salaries. And obviously, you know, we, we are very good at what we do and we put out a great program, but there's also a cost that's involved in it and we try to keep the cost down. So there was never any subsidy that was involved in our lunch prices. So with, with the town. So for years past, there's never been any money that's been put in only to offset once in a while. And then obviously we've had some, some other things where things may have been, you know, we've had some changes at business manager and stuff. So with Marcy and I, we've really dug deep into this whole thing and gone through the whole process. And I mean, we're pretty, we're pretty confident that we're going to end up being a lot closer. And like Marcy said, and we're, we're in a lot better position. I mean, 50 and 80,000 is minimal compared to three quarters of a million dollars for Falmouth that they're expected to be at the end of the year. And obviously we're, you know, we're doing with, with less, less staff. We have 11 staff members and we're serving close to 10,000 meals a month. So you know, we're, we're doing the best we can. Costs are up, salaries are up. Like I said, it's a catch 22. We have great people, but they cost a lot of money too. And then we've had situations where we've had to replace equipment where we really didn't have budgeted money for it. And so that was created also the deficit because there was equipment and repairs that were never budgeted for. So basically it just came out of what our food sales were. So in the end, we, we had no money. So it looked like we were in the deficit. We also have negative student accounts upwards of $30,000 that we haven't been able to recoup. And the previous administration did not want to send out, you know, to collections or anything like that. But that's another bit of information that we've tried to, that we've never really put to the forefront. So you know, you think about that, that's a $30,000 deficit that we're carrying that really should be a debit to our account. So yeah, that's just my, my thought on that, Marcy, if you want.
Thank you.
And thank you, Peter. I wanted to mention that we were able to use the COVID grant money to enhance and support Peter's operation with some equipment. We got some new, we were able to purchase a new dishwasher, tilt pan, which I'm not sure what that is exactly, but I know it's very critical to the operation for the remote hybrid meals that go out in the operation of the high school. And then we were able to provide all the packaging materials for the, the hybrid meals as well through the grants. That helped tremendously. And, and I think it's going to help at our bottom line by the end of the year.
And I, I believe we weren't allowed to use the COVID money for salaries and benefits because that wasn't, that was already in the budget. So.
No, and then that's another thing with this year, obviously our labor numbers, I mean, because I could have said right now that I had four part-time people, but as, as of this year, those people have been working more hours because of the way we have to serve lunch. So.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you guys. That's, that's very helpful for me. I understand that. But I'm sure we'll get into a little more next week when we talk about the fund balance. It's intersection, absolutely, fund balance. We do have a couple of questions. Kimberly. And then, and then Cindy.
Thank you, Phil. I had a question for Troy and maybe a like Jason Troy combination question, but I don't know if you want to kind of hold those questions for next week and focus on the nutrition stuff.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. And if people don't know the answers though, they can always come back next week.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, that, that's perfectly fine for me. Um. Okay. So I, I appreciate all your presentations tonight. Thank you very much for, for getting the answers to our questions. Troy, I really appreciate the, your proactive approach to trying to mitigate academic loss in math area with the interventionist next year. And I just wondered, I, I think I heard you say that it was only going to be at grade level math, not, not if kids are, I don't, I don't even, I totally lost track of the various maths in the middle school, but I'm wondering, while those kids maybe have been doing well, if they're at an upper level math, if they are perhaps also losing content area this year. Is there any plan to address that? Perhaps not with this interventionist, but.
So that's a good question. And I think the interventionist is slightly separate from that because we're really talking about getting kids that have not currently mastered grade level standards. Not as concerned about students that have not mastered a grade level or two standards above where they currently are working. So I think the priority is to get everybody through the grade level standards first. So that would be the goal for the interventionists. I think there's two ways of, two things that are happening for the, to meet the needs of the kids that you're talking about. Kimberly, and one is the spiraling work in, in the vertical alignment really of our math programming. So for example, our, if I have an eighth grader in algebra and they may not have covered it maybe or mastered, I think it's fair to say they're being introduced to the concepts. But I'm not sure that it there, it's at the same mastery level of maybe a more typical year. Everybody's aware of that. So for example, my math team talks to the high school math department and they identify those areas that they're thinking are going to take some refresher time. I actually love Jeff's idea because I, I think that kind of early kickoff to the school would be, would be very helpful for, for many of our kids. But so some of it has to do with communication, vertical alignment and talking about standards. There is going to be a little bit of a challenge. If I'm an algebra one student now, there's that class called geometry in the middle before the algebra two thing hits. And then the gaps from algebra one could show up. So this is not going to be a one year necessarily one year set it and forget it kind of fix for them. I think it's going to have to take a couple of years for kids to go through that process. And it's really going to count on the communication we have. The other way I think of supporting those students is obviously through our ascend math program, which we've kind of started to ramp up a little bit, the usage of this week. Starting to have some expectation of everybody doing it. The challenge is I don't want to grade it. I don't want it to become that extra pressure on students. However, we all know things that are not graded are not necessarily on the top of people's list to do. So, but that is an opportunity to fill and build some of those gaps that Jeff was talking about. Because students will get that extra practice and time to do that. We will also be able to see the standards they have mastered and haven't. So then we could target them for the summer if we wanted to say, hey, you've, you've completed the expectations in algebra, but these are some things that you'd really help you moving forward. They still have access to that program. So essentially a personal tutor over the summer. And I believe that we can kind of design a program that would fit their needs and, and identify the standards for them to work on. So slightly different approach, doesn't really deal with the interventionists right now, but that's kind of the path forward that I can see for those. Does that help?
Yes, that, that's very useful. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then my second question, it goes back to the, I think ascend is what you called it and, and Jason mentioned dream box. And I believe the intention is to maybe eventually go forward with one or the other. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, but, um, but could we anticipate then? I think Jason said it was a $14,000 subscription cost for dream box. Would that be a cost that would cover the middle school as well if we went with dream box or, or if we went with the send? Or is there an additional cost for each school?
Yeah. So I kind of bargain with the send person, you know, we kind of barter back and forth and I try to, you know, there's a benefit for these companies to say they're working with Cape Elizabeth. So I use that every chance I get. But essentially, I think ours for a send issue was $6,000 for everybody to, my, every student to have it all. And it goes through the summer. Part of the challenge for me with dream boxes, it's a K8 program, I believe. And I have many students, I believe a send will go up through maybe trig. So it can, I think, I think it can be more useful for the middle school than the current version of dream box. Now I've only set through one dream box presentation, so I could be totally wrong on that, but I believe it's a K8 program. So I think it, I think we have many students that would limit out. And I would rather have something that would impact and help and support all of our kids. So that's, that's my answer. I don't know what Jason knows or thinks about that, but we're, we're definitely in the stage. I think pre pandemic, the need for that was less, honestly. And my goal would be to get back to those areas. And I think we could use fewer licenses. I don't think there's a need for everybody to have that all the time. Because our students do very well in a, in a typical year.
Sure. And so to address the dream box, like I don't believe, and Kathy can chime in too. If, if she'd like, but I don't believe there was ever an intent for the elementary to use a send or even, I'm not even sure how low it goes in the grade levels. Do you know that Kathy?
Well, I think Troy told us that it starts in the element, at the elementary school. But yeah, I mean, if we, if we ended up deciding that we want, and we talked when we presented at the last meeting that we were going to look at both programs next year. And we wanted the opportunity to use them in a quote unquote normal school year and then evaluate. And I mean, you generally do get economies of scale when you have a program in, in. I mean, you generally do get economies of scale when you have a program in, in multiple schools. And. And, and I think, I think we've all become, to Troy's point, skilled negotiators and we, we, we. We, we do bargain with, with these vendors. So, so we're at the high school and geez, middle school's really interested. And what can you do for us? And. So, but I, you know, I think. We want to, we want to pick the program that's best for kids. And it may be. That Dreambox is best for our elementary school age students and Ascend is best for our middle school age students. And I think we have to be prepared for that, but. But we're not, we're going to have an open mind. We're going to, we're going to. Implement both next year and, and then we'll see where we're at.
And, yeah, and really quickly, I would just add, it's really important to me to remember that we're not talking about a program to replace classroom instruction. You know, so it's really about finding something that supports the classroom instruction. So I think that makes the necessity of having some continuity in programming less important, in my opinion. Because it's not the, to me, it would never become our curriculum and it's not going to replace the teaching. It's much more about individualized support for students and access. So.
This is also where a director of educational technology might step in and do some research on. Some programs and what's worked well. You know, for students nationwide and, and in nearby districts and. So that would be another responsibility of that director of educational technology. To work with, with the principals and, and the curriculum, the director of teaching and learning to. To research those programs and select those programs.
Thank, thank you all so much. And my final, I don't know if it's a question or request, but in the. I don't know, a couple of years ago, we instituted sort of a consistent evaluation for new programs that are implemented to go back. And I wondered if we have something like that. You know, maybe, I don't know, along the lines of subscriptions or, or things like that that we're adding in that are not necessarily a new hire. Or a new program, but something just so that we're not, so that we're looking back at things that we've added into the budget and, and truly evaluating. If we want to continue to have them in or if we're just hitting repeat. Thank you.
Thanks, Kimberly. Cindy.
Hi, thanks, Phil. I have a question for Dell. And I'm wondering if you have been able to receive all, or if you've been able, if we've been able to deliver all the required I E P service hours this year. And do you need, anticipate any need to provide compensatory services next year? Due to students who may not have been able to access support during remote and hybrid learning.
So we are fulfilling I E Ps in their entirety. And that has been the plan since, since we got back in September. And if there have been students that were struggling with regard to that, I think I've mentioned to the board that. We have many students that are coming in all four days to receive those services. And again, to fulfill those I E P obligations. The hundred percent remote students. That are, is based on parent choice is a little bit more challenging, but of course, we're doing everything we can to again. Fulfill those I E Ps to, in their entirety. And was there a second part to your question? I'm sorry, Cindy.
Well, that, that was mainly it. I, I said, would you anticipate any need to provide compensatory services next year? To students that might not have had full delivery this year.
So there will be, you know, and again, on an individual basis, there'll be conversations with families if. As we get to that point that. Case managers are sharing that certain students, regardless of the efforts that were made, still were unable to. Have a meaningful benefit from the instruction that was being provided, then we would certainly be discussing the compensatory services at that time. Or probably the term I would use is COVID impact services.
And that, and you know, my question least obviously, what is that considered in the budget for next year? The potential to have to provide that.
So I had mentioned that the plan is for most likely a more robust E S Y. And so I have been doing my best to. Make sure the funding's there in place for that. There are, I mean, as, as I noted, that there was a slight. Increase in the budget line for E S Y for the upcoming school year. And then also grant money is being set aside as well to, to meet those needs as well.
Thank you.
Great question, Cindy. Thank you.
I think that's it at this point, if there are last chance for board members. We do have a Jen.
It can probably wait until next week. Marcy, regarding the fund deficit. And I'm trying to think of this and not in terms of car loans, but is there any sort of interest that we carry if we don't pay off that fund? The food service fund deficit within the one year. So any other additional funds that would be tacked on to that?
Good question, Jen. No, luckily not in this case. Again, with that, it, it ultimately impacts the overall. Fund and cash balance position for, at the town level, less interest earnings overall. Ours is separated, of course, from the town. But if you look at globally, overall, the earnings cash balance wise, but no penalty for any interest charge for carrying the deficit.
All right. Well, I think that's it for tonight. We'll continue this conversation. I want to thank everybody for participating and for all the work you put into this. As usual, it's. Great to work with people who are so thoughtful and who come so prepared for these kinds of questions for us and makes our job easier. So we'll look forward to talking to you next week. I think just as a preview that I already previewed it, but because we're going to look at some written materials, we may. We may do a first quick round again around the administrators. And we'll start with that and then we'll go into Marcy's more in-depth presentations on the fund balance issues and the school funding formula issues. And so with that, have a good evening. See everybody.